potatoes in there and they, I don't do fish in there, but eat a lot of chicken in there and, and for a sandwich.
Sandwich or something I get for grilled cheese, put that in there.
Oh my gosh.
We are live.
Oh.
And air fried steak is still good.
That's right. While we're live, we can tell you all how to make it.
Call this meeting to order. For all those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Opening prayer will be led by council, council member Campbell.
God, we come to you tonight. We just ask that you give this body wisdom as we guide this community and we just give you the thanks that you deserve for your protection through these winter months and we just give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, ever God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and welcome to Republic this evening. I'm gonna start off with mayor's announcements for tonight. I am going to appoint Robert Mitchell to the housing authority for a four-year term. Moving on to citizens' participation, we're gonna go ahead and open citizens' participation. Anyone that is wishing to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing that there is none, we're going to close citizens' participation. Moving on to the consent agenda, I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items number two through five on the consent agenda. Seeing there's no questions, no comments, I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. Board commission and committee schedules. We have a board of adjustment meeting on March the sixth, two thousand twenty-five that has been canceled. The planning and zoning meeting on March the tenth, two thousand and twenty-five has been canceled. We have a city council work session, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, eleven a.m. here at the builds building. City council meeting, March the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and we have another city council meeting on April the first, two thousand twenty-five. It'll be April Fools. There's no April Fools. Old business and tabled items, there is none. New business and first reading of ordinances, item number six. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill twenty-five dash zero seven by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately ten point four four acres located at six eight eight South Kansas Avenue from agricultural AG and medium density, single-family residential R one M to medium density, single-family residential R one M.
Thank you, Laura. And we've got Patrick Ruiz here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening, Patrick Ruiz, associate planner. The applicant, James Nathan LLC, has applied to rezone six eighty-eight South Kansas Avenue from a split zone property of agricultural AG and medium density, single-family residential R one to a unified zoning of R one M. The property is approximately ten point four four acres and is occupied by a vacant house and poor conditions resulting from a previous fire. The subject site is in the vicinity of R one M and AG zone properties. All of the mentioned properties have the same land uses as a single-family residential as to the permitted uses allowed in the R one M zoning district, other than the forty-acre vacant lot to the west, which is located outside of the city limits and across the street from Kansas Avenue. The subject site is in close proximity to both municipal water and sanitary sewer systems located at the stubbed-out streets from the northern and eastern subdivisions. A traffic impact study was required for the subject rezone and no traffic improvements were found necessary. So city staff considers the proposed rezone requests to be generally consistent with the comprehensive plan compatible with the surrounding land uses and able to be adequately served by municipal facilities. So based on this information, city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Do we have any questions, comments from council? Seeing that there is none, do we have any citizen comments this evening from any citizens in the audience? Seeing that there is none, and as a reminder, this is a first read, so make sure that you get with staff with any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number seven, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill twenty-five dash zero eight by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending ordinance twenty-four fifty-eight vacating approximately one thousand nine hundred twenty square feet of right-of-way along East Green Tree Street, V A C A twenty-four zero zero two, to correct a Scrivener's error.
Thank you, Laura. And we've got Chris Taber here this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris Taber, principal planner. In October of last year, vacation twenty-four dash zero zero two, which was approved as ordinance twenty-four dash fifty-eight, was brought forward before the planning and zoning commission and the city council and later approved vacating right-of-way along Green Street in Wilson's Valley Phase One. The legal description vacating the right-of-way in that initial application had a Scrivener's error, which means that the legal description had an error in what was written out by the surveyor. So this error is considered a material change and so this item went back through, since it would have altered the physical space of that actual vacation. So the item went back through the publication process and is being brought forward by, by staff today for an amendment to the original, to bring in the new legal description in place of the old.
Thank you, Mr. Taber. Do we have any questions, any comments from city council? Seeing that there is none, do we have any citizens here this evening to comment? Seeing that there is none, as a reminder, this is a first read, so make sure that we get with staff with any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number eight, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill twenty-five dash zero nine by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending ordinance twenty-four fifty-nine vacating approximately three thousand five hundred eighty-six square feet of right-of-way along East Green Tree Street, V A C A twenty-four zero zero three, to correct a Scrivener's error.
Thank you, Laura. And we've got Mr. Taber here again this evening.
Good evening again. So I've got a related item here. This is the adjacent piece of right-of-way on the same street. October of last year, again, a separate vacation, twenty-four dash zero zero three approved as ordinance twenty-four dash fifty-nine, was brought forward before the planning and zoning commission and approved by city council, vacating the right-of-way along Green Tree in Wilson's Valley Phase Two. The legal description vacating the right-of-way in that initial application had a Scrivener's error requiring revision due to the necessity of a material change being made. So we are asking that this previous ordinance be amended to accept the new legal description in place of the old.
Thank you, Mr. Taber. Do we have any questions, any comments from city council? Anyone that would like to try to pronounce Scrivener's error? Hopefully I did it right. Do we have any citizens here this evening to comment on this one? Seeing that there is none and we have no comments, no anything from council? To make sure that this is a first read, so make sure we get with staff before any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number nine, I need a motion and a second for the second, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill twenty-five dash one zero by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending title two, Public Health, Safety and Welfare, Chapter two oh five, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article two oh five two, Fire Prevention, General Regulations by adding Section two oh five point zero six seven, Emergency On-Site Fire Monitoring to the Municipal Code of the City of Republic of Missouri.
Thank you, Laura. And we've got Chief Compton here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening. A couple weeks ago, you recall, we had a workshop that, on this particular ordinance and on the next one that's coming up on the agenda right after this. So this is a fire protection ordinance on two oh five that allows us to bill for standby time after the first hour on the scene and we break that down in fifteen-minute blocks. That workshop was really good and it worked like government should because I had three members of the council come up and comment about they thought our hourly rate was too low. At that time, we were gonna base it off the state rate of the hazardous material law is twenty-five dollars an hour. Working with our staff internally, we have come up with a rate of thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents an hour and that's across the board for all members that are on the scene excluding the fire chief and a deputy fire chief. Also within the, this ordinance has been reworked a little bit since that workshop based upon the comments that we received. Also, within the local one fifty-two contract, there is a clause in there, after four hours in length, we must call back off-duty staff. So if we have to call back off-duty staff to backfill the city so we're not blacked out, if it is related to something in this ordinance where they have struck a utility line, a gas line, something like that, and we're charging for standby time, we will also charge them that callback time, an hour and a half rate there as well. Other than that, everything else is pretty much the same that we was, that was presented at the workshop.
Thank you, chief. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? No questions, no comments. Sounds like we've had a good job by bringing forward a good ordinance. Do we have any questions, comments from anyone in the audience? Citizens comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
What I probably do, just because those that may not have watched the work session, what this is about, the, the codes for both, the next two agenda items are about utility contractors that are in town. Obviously, we're a utility contractor as well. So just kinda strengthening our, our legislation around if contractors are working around our utilities and strike those and we have our, our apparatus or our crews on site for extended periods of time, we're running into those situations. We've had residents that have had their lines hit. I will not discuss specific utilities that do that, but at the same time, this is actually, you know, we're, anytime we're creating legislation or changing, I wanted to be clear, we're not trying to be punitive, but at the same time, it should not cost the taxpayers money when our crews are sitting on site for something that could have been prevented. So I'm glad to see that we've added teeth to the ordinance. I still, me, we've talked about this at some length. I, I would like to know what the punitive nature of it is still. I think it needs, hopefully between now and the second read, we can have more discussion of what the rates need to be, even more what we're allowed to do.
Well, we're charging, addition to the hourly rate, we're still charging one hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the truck and equipment and things like that that we're using on the scene. So the, the hourly rate is an average that we come up with based upon analysis of staff's pay.
Yeah. I appreciate the work on your ordinance.
That includes all benefits, too. So trying to balance here, sir.
I understand. I just think that there's sometimes it's just as cheap to run through the line versus to pay the fee and I just wanna make sure that it is, it's enough that there's enough penalty in the fee. We'll continue to have that conversation that whatever we're doing is it's addressing the need of a, of the code to, to help prevent it.
Right. The other thing that we did add to this, there's a clause at the end of this that you can all, so we recoup our costs and you will be fined per the next ordinance coming up five fifteen and we'll discuss those fines when that ones were at next.
Very good. I'm, I'm with those council members that didn't like the fees, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any additional questions, comments from city council? All right. Seeing that there is none, and as a reminder, this is a first read, so make sure that you get with staff with any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number ten, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill twenty-five dash eleven by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title Five, Building and Construction, Chapter five fifteen, Rights of Way Management, Section five fifteen point zero two zero, Definitions of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic of Missouri, and adding new Section five fifteen point one three zero, Utility Damage Prevention.
Thank you, Laura. And we've got Fire Chief Compton here again this evening, second part.
Yeah, so I did this at the workshop as well and this is a ordinance that's within the builds department that our utility right-of-way inspectors enforce. And this is strengthening that and that is part two to the one that I just presented. So when they come into town to do these bores for, and I'm gonna use fiber optics, cause that's the ones that's here right now, a builds department is very good about, they have pre-construction meetings and they have meetings as, as the job is being progressed. And there's, we've done a, a good job of preventing these, but then we have companies that just simply don't care. They just show up, start to work. They don't really wanna follow the rules. This change in this ordinance will allow the city to fine them. And so it, you know, it talks about the weekly meetings that they have to attend. If they don't attend that, we can give them a stop work order. The fines are still the same as they were in the workshop. It's five hundred dollars for the first offense, a thousand for the second, and the third offense is a ten thousand dollar fine. Again, there was some discussion amongst the council members about they thought that was too low. I don't really have a good answer to what to set the fines at. And after discussing this with Megan and Lisa, we're going to, I hate to say this, David will kill me, but put a monkey on your back as to where we need to set that between now and the second read. We are open for suggestions, but I'm trying to again, find a happy medium here. Five hundred is probably too low, but I don't know where it needs to be. I don't know if the five hundred needs to be a thousand, but I would respectfully ask that this is a first read between now and the second read, kick this around and see what you think it should be. Contact us. We are open for suggestions.
Do we have any questions from city council? So I've got a question for you, chief. So is that fine, is that fine in addition to the hourly rate that was charged on the other one?
Yes, sir.
So it's, it's stacked on top of each other. And that five hundred, was that, that was for, for the first occurrence of something?
First offense, thousand for the second, ten thousand for the third.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Megan.
Plus with, just to add on to what you said, the ten thousand for the third offense, there's also a stop work order penalty that can be imposed. The city is exempt from that only. Otherwise, technically, they would be falling within it, too. And then for Mr. Cameron's question on two oh five, this section, this punitive section is referenced in two oh five. That was one of the changes that we had made. So that is the punitive element that's in the, the other piece of this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Campbell.
To clarify, you won't always have the first fees associated with, like, like if it was a strike to a non-hazardous utility, you wouldn't have the first set of fees with the fire department.
Correct. And we get them the first hour.
Not, not every strike will have both fees or penalties. It would just be, the first part would be for the hazardous portion of that. I just wanted to clarify that, make sure I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. So that just applies to the hazardous then, like a phone line or something that's not going to?
Yeah.
We don't wanna hit anything in the ground, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neal.
And this would apply if it was found to be negligent, right? If, if they called for a mark and they dug exactly what was marked and they still hit a line, we're not gonna impose fees on people that followed the rules.
If, the majority of them are not calling for locates. They're just doing it. And we have seen, to be honest with you, we have seen locates that were not marked correctly because there was so much stuff in that utility ditch, the, the thing that they used was giving a false signal. So that would be up to the right-of-way inspector when they go out. I, you know, if it's marked and they hit it by mistake, I can't see us fining them for that. I mean, you know, they were working around it. What they should be doing is digging what is called potholes. You can see that in various parts of town where they're actually going down through here digging to see how deep that is before they proceed on over the top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Do we have any other questions, comments from city council? Seeing that there is none, do we have any citizens' comments that are here to speak on this one this evening? Seeing that there is none, and as a reminder, this is a first read, so make sure that we get with staff if we have any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to other business and resolutions, item number eleven, twenty-five dash R dash zero eight, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to engage Storecom Incorporated for the provision of storage area network, SAN Solutions, upgrades and ongoing SAN support. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-five dash R dash zero eight, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And it says, I've got Mr. Sully here this evening. Here he comes.
Backstage, bam, right there. Backstage. We let him come out further now, man.
Welcome.
Evening. Michael Sully, data and security supervisor. This is a project to upgrade our existing storage we use for our servers for the city. The device is currently just under six years old and we've started experiencing a few issues with it as well as we've maxed out capacity. One of the advantages of the new solution will give us an increase in camera coverage, quality and duration. Right now, we're limited on duration in parks and a couple other departments have voiced concern about that and want to increase that for the aquatic center and different items. We actually went to bid three times for it because we kept having vendors not complete all the requirements on there. And it wasn't on our part, it was just, they just skipped stuff. So we finally have a solution now. The last time we went to bid was eleven options from four different vendors and we're recommending Storecom has a five-year warranty, a twenty-four-hour turnaround in a emergency situation if hardware fails. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Sully. Do we have any questions, comments from city council?
This was a budgeted item, correct?
Yeah, it was budgeted last year, but it's getting moved to this year and we're gonna do a budget amendment on it because we've been working on it since last July. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harder. So then just storage, this, this is all the security cameras, everything that happens around. It's all stored on that?
I think it is like hard drive in your computer, but for the entire city.
For the entire city?
Yes.
So of the heart?
Yes.
Questions, comments, anything else from city council? As this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Item number twelve, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute agreements with Kerr Consulting, Sage Intact, Continental Utility Solutions Incorporated, and ADP to provide the city's new enterprise resource planning ERP software. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-five dash R dash one zero, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we've got Mr. Bob Ford here to give us an overview.
Good evening, Bob Ford, chief financial officer for the city. We're gonna talk a bit about project Genesis. As you recall, Genesis is our, our project to upgrade and improve our underlying ERP software solutions within the city. So in a nutshell, from the preparatory work that we performed as part of Phase One, the city and Cherry Becker, who you recall is the outside consultant that we engaged to help us with this project, we developed an RFP. That RFP was then put out for public comment, public response. We received nine responses as part of that RFP process. Three of those responses were disqualified because they didn't meet the underlying criteria, but we, in the end, both Cherry Becker and the city evaluated the remaining six. From that six, we narrowed it down to two finalists, NetSuite and Sage Intact. And last week, we're originally, we were planning on having demos week before last, but the snow got in our way, so we rescheduled. We had Sage Intact and their team onsite for one day, giving us a demo of all of their recommendations, and then NetSuite three days later. And as a result of that demonstration plus the responses on the RFP, plus the input and data collected by Cherry Becker, we are recommending that we choose the nets, choose the Sage Intact solution and that we propose that we engage them in a discussion to move forward to the next step. As part of that process, you'll recall, we engaged Cherry Becker, no, it's been what, four or five months ago to help us in this process. And tonight, Jim Holman from their digital advisory practice, who has been, we've been locked step and attached at the hip for the last four or five months, is gonna spend a little time giving you a deeper dive on the process that we went through with regards to how did we get to where we are and how did we come up with this specific solution as our recommendation. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jim. Jim's gonna spend a little time walking you through the process and what we've learned and why we think the Sage Intact solution is the right solution for us.
Let's see. Which is the clicker I need to hear? This one?
Yep.
So Mr. Mayor, council.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. From sunny North Georgia, coming out here. The last time I was here, coming out, canceled because of the snowstorm. And now I see you guys are getting some snow. I think it just waits for me to show up. I promise I'll go away. So before we get started, first, it's been a pleasure to work with the city. And there's a, this isn't about me or Cherry Becker. We're primarily a southeastern-based advisory accounting practice, not one of the big household names. I'm a director within the digital advisory practice. So that means we're helping local government and small business and mid-sized businesses primarily overcome their technology questions and obstacles. So it's always a pleasure when we can work with local government that's trying to do things differently because there's, it's a competitive marketplace and there's a lot of firms out there that do what we do. But what was very attractive to what the city was trying to do was citizen enablement efficiencies, running a city using data and, and positioning the city for growth. This, you'd think that would be a very common thing with small cities, but it really isn't. The status quo tends to win ninety percent of the time. So it's okay to ask questions about the technology. It's gonna be using platforms in a combination. It's not one big SAP or Oracle or Tyler that's like it used to be ten years ago. So please interrupt, ask questions. I prefer this to be a dialogue, not a monologue. But I also wanna respect the process because I know you don't, you've got other things to do today. So, so that's me when I wasn't quite as gray about seven years ago. This is what, it's, I looked at, Republic didn't do this to me. It's gonna get. So I did, I did wanna give a shout out to the Genesis advisory team. So some of them are here today. Lisa Addington, chief of staff, Chris Parks, park and rec director, Josh Jones, data and analytics, Michael Sully, who we saw just a minute ago, IT acting director, Jake Jones, finance manager, Big Bob Ford. And it was a, it takes a village and you'll see in, that the process of what the city did is unique and I wanna commend the city and the effort that they did. So we'll just hop right in. So again, this is the obligatory, who the heck is Cherry Becker? This is us. And if there's any questions about that, please let me know. But it's not about me or Cherry Becker today. So if we wanna talk about what the process is, this whole RFP process, so I wanna commend a strong effort from this committed team that yielded consensus on the recommended system on time with a weak weather delay. When we were looking at other RFP processes for technology, it was interesting to see that half of the RFPs from other cities don't actually reach a decision. You think you go to all this trouble to choose something and not pick. So given that we did this in the wintertime, and you'll also notice that number three there, what's a bottom-up RFP development? Essentially, it's involvement from not just the committee, but other members of the team in other parts of the city. So there was representation with people that are actually gonna use the system in building that consensus. That's a, you'd think that again would be common and it really isn't, which is why so many of these projects fail. So looking at this high effort from the Genesis team, and you could see it was really based on a need. on a need assessment. It wasn't our template that we had you fill out. It was starting with lots of interviews and talking to the teams about what do you not like about Tyler in code, which is what you have now? What would you like to see in a new system, obviously fitting within budgetary constraints? So that's the bottom-up approach, is actually talking to the people that are using the old system on what they want and something new. From that, we do a bottom-up RFP development, and there's always a critique of a small city that this is a super-fast, superficial, rubber-stamp RFP, and it really isn't. It was 52 pages written from scratch of an RFP. That doesn't mean it's perfect. We're not perfect, but it's not like any other RFP that another city's had before, not that we've worked with, anyway. So that's hard work from your team, and they had to put the effort in. It's easy for us to just have the conversations, but to listen to what the city, the input they have, it was what we needed to do to make sure when we're talking to vendors on your behalf, that we're reflecting what the city's values are. So that modern technology focus, number four, it's going to be cloud-based solutions. It's going to be an application programming interface, this API thing. This is not a jargon-heavy presentation, but essentially, how can you have two systems that seamlessly work together by different providers? So that's really the way software works. Whether we have at home a smart TV, and whether you have Google, or whether you have an Amazon or an Apple, everybody has their own cobbled-together tech stack at home. And what we're trying to do is, when those situations exist, that those systems talk to each other. So that's really what the, that's that API package, is how do we have these things talk to each other well and securely? And then lastly, design for city growth. What can we do so that your administration, staff level, say, accounting department, that we could double in size but not double our accounting staff or double administrative staff? How can we take that money instead and put it in citizen services and do what our mission is, and not add to people entering data into multiple places at once? So that's a real, designing it for growth is something that you guys should be proud of before this project started, and I think that some of the technology-based large employers that I've seen move into the city, I think that's also going to be something that they would look at, too. So why did the city decide to replace Tyler in code? So a seven-year-old system, which sounds old, really should last longer than that, but you can see within just those four circles outdated technology, manual processes, which is a lot of smart, hard-working people typing in a lot of numbers into multiple places, a very Excel-dependent everything. Excel is really great, but it's not meant to run a city. It's also not secure. You can email spreadsheets, you can change numbers. It's not a secure place to do the business of the city. And luckily, Excel is going to be a final destination if you want to look at something or put a graph on it, but that's not operating the city business under the new ERP. Limited reporting and analytics, so this isn't just graphs and charts and things like that, but how can we use it to help make decisions on what we should do? And then lastly, utility billing has been a frustration point. This is a double-edged sword, not just from the citizens that are getting bills that may or may not be right, that may have difficulties in paying, but also within city administration that has to process that. And when you look at the reality of receivables, collection issues, disconnects, you want that to be as seamless as possible on both ends. You want to be able to bill as accurately and fairly as possible and apply those payments as quickly and as automated a fashion as possible. So these are all critical things that Project Genesis, the key team, pointed out to us to make sure it was a priority. So there's the city's, the strategic vision for this project. You can see in italics there, this was something that the committee participants shared with us, and we wanted to make sure that we documented what that was so that when any RFP response came in, does it enable the strategic vision? Does it fail in any particular area? It's not always the technology. It could be the team that is presenting to us. Are they listening? Is Republic big enough? Is it important to them? So these are all the different areas that had to be important from those providers. So after the demonstrations, which were Monday of last week and Friday, or Thursday, rather, we met on Thursday evening to go through and make sure there weren't any other questions. And as Bob said just a moment ago, the recommendation was for the Sage Intact solution. So you can see that in each of those areas that it satisfies the city's need for functionality and efficiency. It modernizes the financial operations. It allows for scalability for future changes in growth. So again, it's not just getting bigger, but it's, things are going to change, and how do we handle that? And then lastly, data-driven decision-making. So these are all things that are going to be really important, which Sage Intact, NetSuite did a good job as well, but fell short in a couple of areas, primarily around payroll processing and utility billing, which are two really big, important areas that we're trying to get better. So there's lots of slides here that will talk about the details, but to keep moving, essentially, looking at fiscal responsibility, those four circles there, single source of truth, you don't have two different reports reporting the same thing, but don't tie, don't match. And how do we streamline our financial processes? Accurate and a well-supported financial set of data that's going to make your auditor happy. And then finally, how do we put strong financial management practices on that so that we have succession planning, and I'm not rushing you out the door, but ultimately...
Eight more years.
Eight more years. But ultimately, when we onboard and train people and recruit, this is a very powerful incentive, that you're not using typical city or county government software like everybody else uses. You're frankly using cutting-edge commercial technology and using it in a way that local government tends to not use it. And that doesn't mean it's brand-new, untried technology. This has been their, Sage Intact came out in 2015, and still, local government's catching up. So it's a great opportunity and a great success story. So again, a little more about this. How can we act more efficiently but also be transparent in our numbers? When the numbers match in multiple places, that's a really big way to say, look, we're not hiding anything. You can go to any one of these sections of the system, and the numbers are the same. As opposed to this doesn't match this, you're immediately going to get hands up. So we're trying to build trust. We're trying to build and decrease the administrative workload, and you'll see this in a couple of places, like trust and confidence among leadership, staff and external partners. That's that governance and oversight that's just a, it's not just the right thing to do, it's a smart way to run city government. So there's more areas there about how do we use data to drive better decisions? Empowering non-financial leaders, typically the analysis numbers and the money numbers that come out of accounting systems that looks like it was written by accountants for accountants. And here, you're going to see out of Sage Intact, interactive reports that are tied to secure logins that would let you query data yourself, depending on your level of access. So it's a good way to see where did this number come from? How much, how much funds in a certain area were encumbered by that purchase order? And to be able to go there and look at it and not expect somebody gives you a large PDF or a stack of paper. It's a, it's an interesting way to look at it that can help you draw conclusions more So there's the smart growth management. What can we do to make sure that Sage Intact is capable of scaling with the growing population? How can we do more work, increased volume, without requiring additional headcount? That's not to say you can't choose to hire more if you want to, but wouldn't it be great to not have to hire in a data entry role and instead place that resource where you think it's going to be most effective? So you can see financial and resource planning improving that. And then later, GIS integration. And how can we do, layer in asset management capabilities, work orders and ticketing and things like that out of one central system? Luckily, with those, these modern systems, you don't have to do everything at once. You can do it in whatever bite-sized piece makes sense, and you have the foundation for the house that you can continue to expand. So concluding, what we think is that the Sage Intact solution offers a major improvement, and it's going to streamline processes and make you more efficient across the board. And it's going to support the city's commitment to innovation and excellence, ensuring it remains competitive and well-positioned for future growth and challenges. So we think that the team did a tremendous, tremendous effort, and we really appreciate it and enjoy the collaboration. We're not finished yet. We're obviously going to continue to hang around and project manage the remainder of the project. Otherwise, it would be very easy for us to help you make a recommendation and then run, but we've got some skin in the game here, too. Plus, we like working with your team, so I know the weather's going to be nicer going So want to take any questions that you guys may have? I know it's been a long, it's been a long process, but happy to answer any of the questions you might have.
Questions, comments, city council? About the rain tonight, for sure. There's no questions, no comments from city council. Just like I said, appreciate all the hard work with city staff, and it sounds like it was a good ordeal.
It's our pleasure.
Appreciate everyone's hard work, and especially from the staff here at Republic. This is a resolution, so we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Thank you, Mr. Holman. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Holman, I want to thank you. I appreciate the kind words about the city and the staff, but I also want to commend Cherry Becker. I think that was a, an incredible selection by our staff to choose your firm and your team. I, I'm grateful that I got to walk by this space several times and not have to enter because I saw data on every screen, and I was just like, I'm glad I get to go back there. But it's nice to have someone that would lead us through it, Bob, for your leadership to go out and kind of initiate it, to find someone to advise us through the process. But I just enjoyed the very first meeting that I was only in one, and it was the first one to do the introduction, to get the vision and the direction of the city of where we want to be. We want to be on the cutting edge, and I believe that you helped us deliver to what that is, to staff that helped participate. I don't think it's, it's no small task to change softwares and to do it in seven years. I want to thank the council for allowing us the funding to proceed with that because a lot would say, hey, listen, we bought it seven years ago, you need to stick with the one you got. But it's kind of like one of those things, Summit was what we had when we got here. Tyler kind of got us to the point where we could survive, and this has been something that's just kind of demonstrates with the growth and development of the city. I'm glad to have both Cherry Becker and Sage Intact going to be on our team. Tell the staff that worked very hard on that. I just appreciate the work. So I've just got a few things tonight. We're going to be bringing before you a Stockton Lake water allocation eventually, so we're getting to that point where we're talking about water or master planning. You are going to begin to see us talk about what the water allocation needs to be from Stockton Lake if we want to proceed with that. We've got a big decision to make. I do think there's significant value in at least having the water allocation, maybe perhaps not the overall master plan at this stage because we don't really know exactly what that looks like for our costs. But I do think there is some value into pursuing at least an allocation, whether we use it and leverage it in the future. But we will be bringing that back to this council. The cost did go down significantly on at least the allocation portion. So what we originally estimated to be around 200,000, closer to 123,000 a year, I believe, is what I saw today. So again, still some work that has to be done, but you will be seeing that coming up in July. Just a reminder that we will be sending out the mailers to the citizens regarding the water and wastewater rates. They will, the first cycle of letters will go out on April 3, and it will show up on their bill on June 3. The second cycle will go out on, well, actually, go out March 18, and will show up on the 5-18. So cycle one and cycle two is what that means. So cycle two, we'll actually get their letters first, and then cycle one will get theirs on 4-3. So 3-18 and 4-3, the letters will go out to kind of explain the project and the things that we're having to do on the water side, and also why we deferred the wastewater. The next council workshop will be on, let's see, March 11. We're going to be talking about the INI pilot study. I know everybody's tired of talking about wastewater, but this is a pilot study that's about a $500,000 project. And for those that do not know, the purpose of the city's building a massive wastewater treatment plant has still got an issue of stormwater in the system. So this is going into where the actual problems are. We're going into a residential neighborhood that actually isolates 32 homes. It's not that those homes are the problem, it's actually where that, those homes are located. I believe during a rain event, those 32 homes, I believe, represent somewhere around a million gallons a day, so you know that either they're flushing a lot or filling a lot of swimming pools, or there's a lot of stuff entering the system. So we're going to target this one area to see what, what can be done, but we're going to have to have a work session because it involves private property. So this is again kind of Cherry Becker, our software, we're doing something that's kind of cutting-edge to say, let's go into the situation and try to actually resolve the point source where we're actually finding these problems and actually address it versus building bigger infrastructure on the backend. Again, we're going to be doing a workshop, so I don't have to explain it all tonight. We're also going to be talking about street overlays, where we're going with the street overlays after the 2020 election measure, after we got a number of our dollars back. I was going into the police department. We've actually started doing a lot more street overlays. So we're actually going to be talking about how that, that decision is made. Again, with the new software and the way data analytics is driving a lot of our decisions, we're also going to be bringing that into the discussion about how we're working on where and how to deal with streets and even infrastructure in the city. I also believe we're talking about, are we doing the financial report, Bob?
We are.
Okay. So we are moving the financial report. Again, these will all be televised, or at least we'll have recordings of them, but we are required to provide a quarterly report, be it a workshop or the city council meeting, so Bob's going to be providing the quarterly finance report at that time. The weather, I found this interesting, so I asked the staff to include this to my report. During the last winter weather roadway clearing from February 12 to the 20, our crews did 2,917 miles, were treated, and 123 tons of salt were used to combat ice and snow accumulation. I want to thank our staff because one thing about it is, I was driving back from St. Louis, wasn't paying much attention to the weather forecast, but I got this thing like, you know, the snow apocalypse was coming. Was it 16 inches? Anyway, but I called the staff, and they said, you know what? We're not worried about it. We need any help? No. Because the council has given us newer trucks and bigger blades, and this will be the first time they got to deploy them. And so again, thank you to the council that provided us the funding to do the things that we're able to do, but to the staff that were prepared way in advance. They're never going to get it all right, I guarantee you, but at the same time, I appreciate the work that they've done to clear the major roadways and to get us open much quicker. I will say also during this snowstorm that we actually had a situation where we had power outage. It also affected us, so the crews that got our system back online at the PD, working with our maintenance staff to get at least our power because we didn't, we had issues with our own dispatch system. But chief, a lot of people don't know this, but a lot, the tornado siren system went out as some result of that snowstorm, and there had to be some quick repairs. Never did I imagine in a million years that Lisa would come to me and say, hey, we need to do this quickly because there's a potential storms coming in tonight. But thank you, chief, for getting our tornado sirens back online, and hopefully you don't go out there just to sound them for the sake of sounding them tonight. Then the father-daughter dance, we had on February 7. There was 818 people attended that event. So congratulations and kudos on another great event for an evening in Hollywood. How come we weren't invited? Because I don't got that. Okay, appreciate it. And then also, one of the legislative policies that we're working on will be a water and sewer rate ordinance. We are actually working on that, staff, working with Megan today. You will start to see a draft circulate, and what we'll have is a workshop on that that talks about how rates and just how to deploy those moving forward and how there's more oversight, long-term, long-range for the city to make sure that its master capital needs are met on those two major elements. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, that is all I have, but you will be seeing a draft that'll kind of float around. It'll be public record, it's not something we're going to just kind of have sitting out there, but you'll be able to take a look at it, and we'll have a workshop on that as well. I believe we'll do that one in April. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Dwayne, we will talk about the fees on someone drilling into our utility lines.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Great job, though, by the way.
Do we have any reports from city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Campbell.
I want to just kind of recognize the city for a little bit. So 20, 20 years ago, I was 25. I was able to take my four-year-old daughter to the father-daughter dance for the first time. And 20 years later, we have not missed one. We were at the event last month. It's just something really cool that this community does, and I know there's some other communities around that have followed suit, which is really, really cool, I think, for that. But to be able to, to have a city that gives an avenue to fathers and daughters, to be able to have a unique night for themselves is really, really special. And over those 20 years, I've taken not only my daughters, but several nieces, and we plan to continue doing it. So David, you're invited next year.
I can take my daughter in.
Yeah.
She's still, she's here.
But Chris Parks, thank you, thank you for continuing that program and all the hard work that goes into it. My goodness, your staff has done a tremendous job, and thank you for the city for allowing that to take place, so.
that to take place, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. You've got to be really good at dancing by now. That's 20 years of dancing.
I am not. Don't plan to be.
Excellent. Now, thank you for sharing that with us. Any other council members have anything to report for this evening? So I'll be short and sweet tonight. I know we've got thunderstorms. Yeah, huge thank you to everyone that cleared the roads. I know utility crews have had their hands full as well. There's been a lot of headaches with the snow, frozen pipes and everything else. So I appreciate everyone and getting everything clear for us. To me, I didn't really notice that much of a difference. They were out there fast and furious and really made a difference in us being able to get around, so thank you. I'd also like to thank the crews that sealed the cracks over at Owen Park. Owen Park had some cracks in it, and recently it got sealed. I know it was closed off for a day or two, but it's so much better. I got to go through there right before council this evening, and it really, I think that's going to make a difference on making that last for a long time. So great out there at Owen Park. One other announcement I would like to make, I know it's not a city announcement, but with the Main Street events going on, they just recently announced the first annual art walk on Main Street to be Saturday, April the 26th. So that'll be another great event down on Main Street. Love to see the citizens and all of their hard work down there and what they're doing. So hope to see some other people down there on the 26th that's for art. So anyone, and there's details from the Main Street events on who can participate and how to get involved in that. I had one quick note outside in the audi, or in the, not auditorium, in the entrance to the builds building, to the left, there's a kettle. It looks like a trophy that's over in the corner. That's the Salvation Army Traveling Mayor's Golden Kettle. And so we had a competition, we had a friendly opportunity together with the mayors from the area, raising money for the Salvation Army. And this year, along with the Republic High School winning their award, the mayor also won the challenge. And so I appreciate everyone, all the citizens that came out to support Republic in that effort, and the traveling kettle is out there in the front, so if you get to take a look at it on your way out. It's a big shiny cup out front, can't miss it. Other than that, that's all that I had for this evening. Please be careful for everyone going out into this weather. We do have executive session for this evening, so tonight, we will be going into closed session under 610.021.2, real estate acquisition. Closed session, closed vote, closed record. I now need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take roll call vote.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.